Welcome, everybody. The, uh, this is a, a repeat of the session we did when a month ago.
Month and a week.
The planning board, as you know, has been working on the Center Village strategic plan for a long time, actually, before COVID, when it really got started, and then COVID interrupted it pretty significantly, so. A lot of the pieces came together, but we didn't feel like we had public input to the degree we wanted, and so we held that meeting in 1870 town hall a month ago, and then that occasion, we invited a lot of the folks in the neighborhood up there specifically, and then this time, we sent out a note to town committees and Doris and everyone else. But the goal is to give you an update as to where we are, and then give you a chance to chime in with thoughts that you have about some of the pieces that might be missing that you leave out of the address, or some of the ways we've perhaps misinterpreted what's been suggested by folks. And we've been working with the Regional Planning Commission during this project. Carrie has been spearheading it, and Emily's her April assistant, and we'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, everybody, for, for joining us tonight, for taking the time to come here and, and hear this. Just a show of hands, I see a lot of familiar faces. Is there anybody that was not at the January 10th meeting that's here this evening?
I was on Zoom.
Oh, my gosh. That was a mistake. Okay, so like to mention, this is almost a complete repeat of that meeting, just we're with a different audience invited. So I will probably go through the slides a little bit quicker, since you've all seen them for the most part, and then we can start the conversation. So I'll just, I'll just move them over here.
Oh, yeah.
And I will, yeah, try to coordinate. Okay, can't see. Okay, so once again, thanks for coming, and thanks to the planning board for helping us orchestrate and advertise for this meeting. So this is the planned agenda for the evening. Oh, sorry, can you not hear me? I figured we would do a round of introductions, just so everybody knows who everybody is, but I, I think we've had the opportunity to meet almost everybody. If it's okay, maybe the, the two in the back that we haven't had a chance to meet, could you just say hi?
We were on the Zoom meeting last time. But you decided to come and put us into a prayer.
Okay. Okay, so essentially, everybody has already seen the slides. Yeah.
I'd like to see them again, though.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, so this is the planned agenda we have for the evening. Some slides. I have these slides to present, and then we'll open it up for discussion similar to what we did last time. And let's see, and just as a quick overview, my name is Carrie, I'm an economic development planner from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. This is my colleague Emily, who I think a lot of you have met through the housing production project she's working on. And as a recap, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is one of 13 regional planning agencies across the Commonwealth. And we, our region consists of, let's see if I can get this right, the boroughs, the bridges, the Brookfields, Worcester, and the Wantusia area. That's new, that's a new pitch that we're trying, so I tried it out on you guys. We, our staff help our member communities with a whole slew of tran- of planning, transportation, land use, economic development, housing, climate, I mean, you name it, we provide technical assistance to all the 40 of our communities. Because we are all in Massachusetts, we follow the smart growth principles, so this is how this plan came to be. Supporting mixed-use development, advancing equity, using natural resources, protecting our ecosystem, providing transportation choices, promoting clean energy, planning regionally, which we, we try to do as often as we can, increasing job and business opportunities, and expanding housing opportunities. The, a timeline of how this project has evolved looks a little bit like this, like Tim mentioned, it started quite a while ago, but the economic development plan was created in 2015, and the village app, the village project, the village plan application was submitted in the summer of 2019. The award was made in the winter of 2019, the data was pulled, and preliminary research was done over the winter of 2020. The spring of 2020 happened, and COVID not only put a kink in our planning process, but it also put a halt into our community engagement portion. The community feedback is not only what makes our planning processes, but it was the intention of the select board when they applied, when they helped us apply for this application, was to really further study the economic development in Berlin as a community. So we evaluated the data, we completed our research, we came up with a study area. We identified priority parcels, we created the, the draft that we have sent to all of you. We submitted it last year to the town of Berlin, we presented it last month, like we mentioned, to the stakeholders, all of you that live or work in the air, in the study area. I think we had some very healthy conversations afterwards, and I'll go over some of our feedback from that meeting in a little bit to and will, what we'll plant, what we'll do is incorporate all of the feedback that we got at the January 10th meeting, all of the emails. If any of you were the ones that sent the emails, thank you for doing that, the follow-up emails. We've had some really great conversations that came through after the meeting. So all of that will be incorporated into the story map and the village plan. After this meeting, any takeaways we have from this meeting, the story map will be updated, will be, will resubmit it to the town to be made public, and then have an open comment period for, from there. So the Berlin Village Project is, it's different from other village projects. The other communities like need economic development assistance, where Berlin has worked hard to have a really strong base, so that residents don't have to carry the burden like many of our smaller communities. Berlin was more looking to have, like I said, healthy conversations around scenario planning, like what if this happened, what if that happened? Is there room for a mom and pop shop, you know, or two? Can we make Berlin Center a little bit more walkable, a little safer, a little bit more livable for the current residents? We're not trying, the intention was never to bring in outside companies for commercial tax or to increase traffic, because we certainly don't need that. But the request from Berlin was very simple, and it was very smart, and it was how to enhance Berlin's identity by developing its local business districts and creating an economic climate that enhances the viability of working lands and conserves natural lands. The intent was very early on not to do a complete build-out, like some of our towns need that. It was actually the opposite, and it was more how to be proactive and as proactive as possible, and so that you never have to be reactive, because there's really nothing worse. I accidentally pushed this button, sorry. So this study analyzes commu- analyzes community data and impacts of COVID-19. It identifies priority parcels, which we have on the next slide, on the next slide, it reviews zoning, because you get what you zone for. It provides case studies on place-making opportunities, and it strategizes ways to accommodate pedestrian access, and it suggests the best practice to support, to further support your existing business community. This is wrong, I'm sorry, Emily, hold on. So the study area consists of a 0.3 mile zone from the church center, larger than a typical village, but we really wanted to incorporate all of the connecting roadways and really make the most out of this plan. Here are the priority parcels that were chosen in the study area, and these buildings were chosen because they have either community or cultural significance. Some of the data that we pulled regarding housing and population in the community, so you have a population of 3,312 with close to 1,300 households, the median age in Berlin is 49, you're 12.9 square miles. 81% of your homes are single-family, and the median sale price is $565,000. Berlin is very heavy in the strengths department, quite like any of our other communities, if I'm being honest. You've played the commercial development card perfectly while still being able to maintain your natural resources. A majority of your labor force works in town or vary nearby. You have a strong school system, followed by high educational attainment levels. You're, you have a consistently low unemployment rate. You're at the top of your current, on top of all of your current planning documents. You've met, not only have you met your 10% affordable housing, you've exceeded it 17%. An afford- affordable housing options not only attract young professionals, but they also allow longtime residents to remain in the community, instead of, instead of having to move and start over and compete in entirely new communities. So I think you appreciate being part in, you know, being part of the town of Berlin, being obviously so vested in this area. You can appreciate the fact, these opportunities, strengths that become opportunities, like voting the Community Preservation Act in 2019. CPA funds can be spent towards open space, historical resources, recreation land, and community housing. Berlin also became a green community, being awarded $66,000 to fund conservation measures like LED lighting and certified municipal buildings. Berlin not only adopted Tier One, but Tier Two, the Complete Streets program, which ultimately increases walkability and enhances pedestrian safety. And during the open pla- open space plan survey, residents clearly indicated that they wanted further development of sidewalks and bike trails. And there are really a lot of exciting opportunities happening in Berlin concurrently. The Route 62 corridor study is being completed. An assessment of all the culverts in Berlin, well, not all of them in Berlin, but all along Route 62 and on your way to Route 70 were completed. The Housing Production Plan by Emily is being updated, and we've had some really, I think, very proactive conversations around housing over the past few months. These are continued, there's continued efforts also to update the historical buildings in, in town, in Berlin Center, and lots of grant writing going underway, all, all completely commendable efforts by the volunteers that help run your community. So what are the future steps? So depending on the feedback that you have tonight will be added into the plan. Also, the culvert, so the village plan will be updated, the culvert assessment and the traffic studies could potentially lead to a phased tip project along Route 62. There could be another attempt at the Safe Roots for School program for assisting what they call signs and lines near the school, for, you can do all updated pedestrian signage and road crossing lines. There were conversations about a cultural corridor around Route 62 that we could potentially be taken up again. There was a feasibility stu- study done by Mass DOT regarding the leg of the Mass Central Rail Trail that comes through Berlin. That could potentially is, could be potentially happening. Those conversations can be happening soon. There's also ongoing conversations in other communities, Northborough and Westborough, that could potentially connect into Berlin with the Aqueduct Trail. And any of these topics, I'm happy to hear about tonight when we open our discussion. So this is the last slide here, like I mentioned, you know, we had a chance to meet in January with all of you, and some of the feedback that we got, let me see, that essentially it was, if you remember, it was close to unanimous about declaring Route 62 unsafe, and that traffic calming measures were needed, that you would all really appreciate, like a sense of arrival when you're coming into Berlin Center, that you encourage, encouraging small businesses that complemented the community. Improving trail connectivity was welcome. Notable septic and well issues that were noted in Town Center that would limit future growth, that was definitely noted at the last meeting. And there's also a lot of love for existing businesses and, and exist things that already exist in Berlin Center, like the General Store and James Garden. So with that being said, I'm open to any feedback that maybe wasn't discussed at our last meeting, or has come up, or that you've thought of since the, when we met in January, or anything that you'd like to add.
Will this be funded?
This is funded, it's already concurrently funded.
Federal, state, or?
This was a state-funded grant application to the Executive Office of Environmental and Energy Affairs. Yeah, it's already done, 2019, we applied. There was a supplemental, a small supplemental addition put to it towards, to help with the community output from the town. The planning board funded. $6,000. There are 26,000 total, I'd say. 26,000. No implementation funding, it's just for the study and the plan. 20, I'd say 20 from the Executive Office of Environmental Energy Affairs, and six from the planning board. So 26 total. Well, it depends, actually, there's a list of potential projects that could come out of this, and there's grant resources for a number of them that could be written to support them, depending on what direction the town wants to go. Yes. Right. Yes.
An audience member and her hand was up.
Oh. Oh, Suzanne.
No, I was just gonna ask you to stop sharing the screen, so we can see what's going on.
I don't know, can you see anything?
Ah, there we go.
So, Susanna, it's really about the slideshow, though.
Okay.
Did she get to see the slides?
Oh, yeah, I did. I just couldn't hear what the questions were.
Okay, there was a question about how much the study cost.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We, this was one of five, five village study projects that we did. It was like a compilation brand. Within our region. This is the best one. Yes.
Carrie, I'm not sure that mentioned the feedback. The mattress document that Harry Agar presented in person.
Yeah, he submitted it to us. Yes, those will be added to the, to the plan. Most definitely. It will be, it could be an addendum, an appendix.
Do you wanna elaborate a little bit on our potential applications of like, to Complete Streets and other communities that are in our region that have participated in those.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, so Complete Streets is a really fantastic program that the Mass DOT runs. And because Berlin, so the phase Tier One, like I mentioned, Berlin has already done, is they adopt the policy, the select board adopts the policy. Tier Two is considered a, an assessment of all of the crosswalks and sidewalks and crosswalks in Berlin. They are, somebody goes out physically and, and surveys, is the best word to say. Photos and photo, photographs and surveys, all of the crosswalks and sidewalks along Berlin. And then Phase Three is, they put together a prioritization plan, and the town prioritizes whichever sections of the community that they think need the most attention first, and they can apply to four, for $400,000 of state funds to help repair and bring those crosswalks up to date. And you'll notice there's several communities that use the Complete Streets program, and they're, they're typically, that they, the sidewalks all pretty much look very uniform, there's a, there's a particular way that Mass DOT insists that the sidewalks are built out. Do you have a question, Mike?
Now, is, is this just to fix all the existing sidewalks, or is this to, you know, have more sidewalks?
The Complete Streets is to exist to repair existing sidewalks. If that's, if that's what the town wants, if there's a section of the, if there's a section of land or a roadway that needs a sidewalk, and, and it's on the prioritization plan, then you could move forward within that direction also, but typically, it's meant to build out sidewalks for safety, for safety sake.
In our case, we, we identified a number of spots that didn't have functional sidewalks, particularly to try to connect places like the school and the town offices and the library and store and everything related, the, the open space, you know, on the corner of Pleasant and 62. And eventually try to link up to North Brook One and Two, and it, it goes so far as to project all the way down to the post offices out here. So, and out to St. Joe's and, and, but it's a multi-year plan that really looks out, you know, 15, 20 years into the future. But it also, your applications can be made more often than once. I mean, it's not like you just get one shot at that opportunity to apply for some of that grant funding.
Year after year.
The important thing for us right now is we need to develop some of the engineering, we need to identify how we do it and what those the, the potential costs would be. And the conversation is floated around using some of the ARPA money that we've got as a community for highway improvement engineering, but also perhaps some of this complete streets engineering that might be necessary in order to make an application strong. And so the traffic state, the advisory committee's been talking about that, and Kristin is looking into the possibility of, you know, generating one of those applications, but we're also, the tip is the Transportation Improvement Program, which wait, you can explain that better than I can.
So the, yeah, so the Transportation Improvement Program is a, it's a very, it's like usually five, seven, 10, 12 years for a project to come to fruition, but it involves a serious, a series of studies that happen in a, on a corridor before you can get what they call on the, on the tip, which is on the list, the hit list. So the corridor, the six, Route 62 corridor study that has been completed, and the culvert study are all preliminary tip project studies, so essentially, I think what, and, and I'm not a transportation planner, I, I should note that, I'm not a transportation planner, but our team has looked at Five Corners, Berlin Center, and Gates Pond Road is the one I was thinking of, yeah. So those are three potential either phased projects, and, and this, none of this is, has been voted on, or this is all preliminary in the study phase, but there's a, there's a safety concern, there's a traffic concern. There is speed, the, the speed of the cars, there's a, you know, sidewalk issues, so it's a, there's a lot that goes into a tip project, but it's potentially, there's a certain percentage of it that's funded through state and federal funds. So it's, the town pays for the engineering. And thus, the rest of the funding comes from the state and the federal government, or majority of it.
And, and there's so many projects that we might apply for assistance with, it's that first step of getting this sort of plan in place that identifies the topics. Begins to dig a little deeper with the corridor study, and then does the preliminary engineering, so you can put a price tag on the expense of trying to deal with Five Corners and potential ways which to, you know, deal with the problems there, so. You know, we thought that tip would make sense for Five Corners, Complete Streets makes sense for the center, and the Route 62 Gates Pond Road issue, as the, there's a proposal to combine some lots over there and, and increase the size of the company farm to make it similar to what you'd find in North Row and some of these other towns, and so as that happens, on DOT, District Three would probably be brought into the process, and they would, that would trigger some assessment of that intersection, and we might get some review of it that we haven't had since the mall proposal for Island Commons. So those are the three target areas in terms of the corridor, and the Center Village is really tied to the Complete Streets process more than it can.
Hi. Is there gonna be any land table at Five Corners?
I don't, yeah, it's so early, and there, there are a lot of layers to Five Corners, as I'm, I'm sure you all know, there's culverts and railroads, and there's a lot of different, there's a lot that still has to be done.
I mean, no one has identified the, the solution, I mean, you try to eliminate one leg in there, and so you only have four, and you make some of those one-way.
Yeah.
It's all sorts of things we can talk about.
I will also say, the, you know, the Housing Production Plan, the Economic Development Plan, the, this Village Center Plan, the Corridor Study, it, it sets the town up to move in any direction that the town wants to. Once you have these studies done, it gives you a, a leg up when you're going for state and federal funding to make these improvements happen. You could sit on this plan forever and do nothing with it, but the fact that it's, it will be done and has the community input, it just, it really gives you a leg up as a community to move in whatever direction you see fit.
Is that, is that input you're referring to in the community, planning board basis or timeline, meeting basis, does that?
So the
Traded down to the
So the first community output we did was invite-only, I guess is the best way to say, a public meeting, but an invite to any stakeholder that owned property or worked in the study area, so we sent out 84 invites to the study area. And this was a town leader, same presentation, but to the town leaders, like boards and commissions, to get their input. And then all of that input will be collected and put into the draft, updated draft, and then that will be set out publicly, however the town sees fit to share it publicly. And there'll be an open comment period for a certain amount of time, and then it would be voted on by the planning board.
And we did do the survey back years ago.
Yeah.
Yes, right?
Yeah.
When did you do that? Year and a half ago.
We did the housing production survey and the open space survey.
Right.
Yeah. I would say planning board or in the board of selectmen too, but since they, you know, they actually helped us uh write the application. Happy to bring it before the board's luck man also. It depends on what project you want, you choose, what direction you choose to move in, if the town wants to. Um, move with complete streets, that was suggested in this, then. The, if they figure out the um engineering funding for that, then they can move forward with complete streets and, and I think we've talked about. Other communities that have used complete streets in different ways where you don't have to.
We reached out to the, to Brookfield, because it was suggested by the um deputy director and C M R P C that. They had a similar situation and what they wanted to try to do with in the center village there and. Um, their T W chief and one of the select board has said they. You know, work with us to have a conversation about how they. Moved forward, they, they must have come into contact with an engineering firm that was willing to um. Move some of the way forward without the significant expenditure of funds.
And Northbrook Field did the same thing.
And then, and then applied for the complete streets money and. Probably um as a result benefited in the long run. Because they continued to do more thorough engineering as part of that process.
I think that's exactly what happened.
And, and so we're, we're gonna try to follow that route here, because it means a small expenditure of some. Just to get a kickstart at work with this. Um, if it, if it seems like it's the right fit, um, work with the same type of uh engineering firm and then have them. Sort of escort us through the process, so we, um, we get it done in an efficient and reasonable fashion.
Yeah.
I totally agree with fixing existing problems, existing sidewalks. Because we got a lot of existing sidewalks that need to be fixed. But when you're talking about putting new sidewalks in that aren't there now. I mean, that means taking, how do you go about taking the right away and all that stuff?
Well, you gotta remember that the road is wider than we assume in a lot of cases. I mean, what the town owns and what. So, I mean, you know, I don't, and, and of course, there's other ways to get to some of these destinations. You go from Berlin Memorial School through to North Row Village, um, which might be a destination that you really wanna encourage. Um, pedestrian access and you can do that on town land. Without even being on a street.
Right, that's a good idea.
And so, so that gets you all the way down to Jones Road practically. Um, and and then, you know, obviously trying to get to South Berlin is a long, long term, but. It, it isn't necessarily impossible, because the town owns the cemetery, you know, there's the, the access across there, we own the, we own some other land. You know, that whole stretch. Where the river goes through his town, you know, so there, so there's opportunities that we could.
Yeah, and I think that would be the way to do it versus putting sidewalks on the streets now, there's so much crap.
Oh, yeah. No. And then, and you know, we've looked at Cardville and tried to figure out safer access to Cardville um. And improvement, I mean, when we evaluated the sidewalks in the tier two part of complete streets. I mean, some were good, none, one was excellent, I think, the one, the newer one around it, the common. But some were only fair, you know, I mean, they just, they, they're not, couldn't put a wheelchair on very effectively and they don't have the. ADA, ADA, yeah, the ADA required, you know. Ramps and stuff like that aren't, aren't there, so you know, those are opportunities for us that we'll get. So you could get from the school to the town offices, to the store, to the meeting house, to the library and. Uh, eighteen seventy town hall, nineteen Carter and, and not feel like you're putting your. Like the hands of the traffic that's zooming by. Yeah, so that's all the low hanging fruit that if you look at the first five to six years. Of the plan going out, it's, it's all that, that's the sidewalk.
I was trying to pull up your pri- prioritization plan. I, I put it in the.
We've got a link.
You have. And I can't share it, can you pull up the story now? Some of the, some of the zoning that we talked about in the plan. Will be shifted because of the water and sewer or the septic and well issues that came up during the. Open comment period. This is the, this is the same, this is your zone, your current zoning map. Yeah. We did, we talked about that in the beginning. That's why we call it the Berlin Center. All the other plans are, are village center plans, but. We kind of leaned towards Berlin Center, because it's not necessarily, we didn't feel. Not we, but the group that I was working with didn't feel like it was.
Like the geographical center and the cultural center.
Right, it was.
So on that map, if it's red, it's commercial. And that's a zone that existed from the nineteen fifties really. When zoning was first done and then. And then if it's orange, it's um. Village commercial, so. Carter Street from like where was the rise to the Gulf. Isn't Gulf any, is it Gulf? That's commercial. And then in the center. Bobos, all those spots, it isn't Bobos anymore, but it all. Those are commercial village. And so there's, there's not as much latitude in the commercial village zone, but. I mean, one of the things that the planning board will probably do over the next year or so is evaluate what uses are allowed in the. Commercial village zone. And see if those need to be modified, either eliminate some or add some. And I think we're particularly interested in thoughts that people have concerning the what ifs. If National Lumber weren't there, what would you prefer to see? And given what's allowed in the zone now, some of the things you might prefer couldn't happen. So hearing from you about the what ifs helps us. Decide what to bring to town meeting. Yeah, as a modification to the, that zone.
Also, Brad, expand housing opportunities downtown. I mean, does it not congested enough? Not much parking.
That was discussed at the housing production plan meeting too.
Whether if you kind of need to know, you know, zoning plan is, as far as going over it goes.
Like ledge. Like ledge, so.
Thing that prevents some activity in the center of town, there is a lack of adequate sewage.
That's right, yeah, so that, that came up in our January meeting. Actually, before the January meeting, I feel like it came up at the housing production meeting. Um, so this will be altered, this will be edited um after we get all the rest of the feedback.
We don't know where, I'm sure somebody does, but. Survey to tell us this is why this is happening. I feel like we're relying on basically past experience, guys that work in town. I don't know if we ever had a survey that would say this is, this and this.
I don't know, we did, we did pull all the previous plans that have been done in Berlin in the past couple decades and I didn't see anything like that. I said, there's a G I S layer that has it, yeah. I'm sure we could find that, Matt, because something, yeah, I don't know.
The nice thing is that if you find an old one of those, they probably haven't changed.
Yeah, nothing, it would all be town meeting. Yes, have all of you seen the, the village map, I mean, the center plan? We've all had a chance to see it, okay.
Or is this the time or is there a time to come when brainware suggestions for?
This is the time, yeah, we'll take, we'll take any of your, it doesn't matter how granular it is, we'll take it.
Because I'm thinking when you're talking about new sidewalks, I, I think a logical one. And it occurs to me every time I drive to nineteen Carter, is the right side of Carter Street right there in the mess. Paving is all falling apart, people parking on people's ponds. There really should be a sidewalk there in some definition side of the road and that would provide. You can go between Central Street and First Parish Church and some of the building and nineteen Carter and houses there and the libraries. A lot more safety, I mean, when you leave nineteen Carter at night, it's. Exercise and break, trying to figure out where things are, so you get A to B.
It really is a, it really is a cool center that you guys have, it. It really is.
That's why we don't wanna modify it.
Yeah, that's all right, I get it. I get it.
And also, I, I was glad your Tim mentioned the concept of connecting, say, the school property and the South Row. Recreation area. Through to Northbrook one and two, that's been sort of a. Is somehow having a pathway, both in there, so seeing this, for instance. And it'll get walking exercise going from there to the South Row playground area and. Have you actually built the walking path that was supposed to be done or?
Should we add all this into the plan?
So behind the, the back soccer fields at town field.
We own, count all the land from the school to the dump, the transfer station. And, and it does connect to the land that North would want to.
But Tim, isn't there, isn't there, I mean, this is what I was told, you can't do that because the people who own that. Which is what, not just about the relief or somebody else. Don't want the liability for having a path that goes across their land. And somebody lawyering up for slip on that, that will replace.
I've never heard that conversation, uh, but perhaps you have.
Can I ask, is this a trail or a sidewalk? I know, but potentially. Full sidewalk? Is there a road, I guess is my question?
I mean, there's a path, people could walk it.
And it would have to be senior frontline.
But as, as we're trying to connect. From Northbrook one and two, by a sidewalk in Pleasant Street, that is virtually impossible, you're gonna be munching somebody's. Many people's yards for sidewalks. Yeah, it'll be like the uh street between Center and Oak Road and nine, they have sidewalks there. It's just waiting for car about the three inch curve and mow somebody down.
Who developed that plan, do we know? Is it worth resurrecting? Just trail funding? Is it worth adding to the plan? Yeah, I think, just in case you, in case you wanna go for funding, then we have it in the plan. The, where the trail is? I don't, this is the first I'm hearing of that, so I'm not sure.
By the baseball fields and so it was gonna go all the way around.
Was there a question over here? Before COVID, would you say?
There was, there was a plan, planned to encompass all the aspects that should have. Is underfunded and crashed and burned because. This should be, um, you know, jump from this sidewalk to that area in the trail or whatever, traffic safety. I mean, if you phased it in the first phase, you wouldn't care, you exist in sidewalks, that alone. And they go in the year to do it. And in the meantime, looking at this, the mall shouldn't go here or go there. I've often thought of the sidewalk on the other side of Carter Street also might make that a little bit of it, I don't know. When you get down to it sixty two, you cross sixty two and come up, like cross over to the church. You can do that up the other end, you don't need a sidewalk, so. Uh, I would. Think that we definitely want to care ADA standards. Existing sidewalks.
I should say that's the point of complete streets is is for safety and accessibility. So any sidewalks that you do repair will have to be ADA compliant. Can you vote to uh improve and pedestrian access? They do. Oh, there it is. Under. If you scroll down. A couple more. Right here. This is your prioritization plan. It's a public document and it was done a couple of years back. Well, only two years back. Sorry. So it's a pretty in-depth. Analysis of all the sidewalks. I don't know how many there are on this.
I think we had twenty six different elements or something like that. And just and as you can see, I mean, the early ones were like Linden to Berlin Memorial Town Offices to the. Out to the what you said, Apple Dark actually is one of them. So people could get access to that Carter to Linden. Woodard Avenue to Blessings. I mean, this was. And then this dollar amounts off to the side. These are probably two thousand and seventeen dollars. So they're. Updated significantly. But um. You know that. If if uh. When we went through this and it was Chief Galvin and um the highway and Keith was highway superintendent at the time of the planning board. In conservation and some of the time. So there were different entities that were participating in this process and. And we just came up with this good list. Focused primarily on on pedestrian access more than anything else. I mean, like Carrie said, some towns. Are really faced with a number of issues. And as a result, their complete streets program might focus entirely on on different subjects. I mean, they might have mass transit in their communities. And so they they focus, you know, more on that than we might. In our case, it was really like Walter said. Except the. So the network that's there. Evaluate some of the opportunities to extend it out. Uh so you capture some of the opportunities that. You know, like. Going to Saint Joe's or or uh. Northbrook Village one and two, stuff like that.
Yeah, every town uses it for different. We've we've used it in our town for just straight up connectivity, like. To be able to walk from one side of town to the other. Um, we've used it in conjunction with streetscape improvements. We've used it in conjunction with tip projects. Um, some of our other, they, it can be. It it. It's aesthetically pleasing. It's it's safety enhancing. It's. I'm talking London, yeah. And it's free, pretty much for the most part.
Does it encompass or we talked about the rail rail. It really are go through that. You know, you want good exercise, safe walking. Or recreation. Have the sidewalks that make the maintenance.
Yeah, because this touches, because the. Because the Mass Central Rail Trail touches this study area, we did put it in the plan. As a reference.
Certainly, we want a sidewalk at the back.
That apart from this plan, is it proceeding?
If the town voted one time to do it. Then I wanted to make sure that.
After that, I heard that there is some movement.
Well, I think there was. Interest at the state level.
Yeah.
And a feasibility study has been done from Walthem to. In Stander.
And we have a link to that in this plan. So you go to the town planning board's site on the town website and you look up this study. And you scroll through it, you'll find links to all these different plans. So you can look at them in very detail, but the. The state rail trail. Central Mass Rail Trail Study is included in there. identifies the Berlin stretch.
Yeah.
And several different options of ways to come through Berlin.
I was gonna say, I think that one of their a- alternative options have been discussed.
Yes.
Because I think that was a big bone of contention. Was the the route that they had proposed originally. Am I right?
Right.
So they have come up with alternative options that are less invasive and not as. Close to people's properties. No, I think that actually the rail trail. The rail trail conservancy.
Okay, thank you.
Mentioned that.
Know by the town means so much to the state, they all like, you know, my ball handle don't know that. They're having a meeting in Clinton tomorrow night on their section.
Yeah, Clinton is very active on getting their portion built out.
And it work in Hudson is happening right now. Um, at least for up to a point Hudson Stow and Sudbury. There, watch my office window every day. They're taking up the trail and leveling it off and cutting down trees and um for the ever source portion.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so that work is definitely proceeding.
Yeah, like they said at the state level, all of the easy rail trails have been built already. So anything that they have, any projects that they have now that are left to be built. Are. Are considered, you know, a medium to difficult project. So it they're not easy to build. They take a lot of time. A lot. At the first rail trail project I worked on to twenty one years to build. It just opened last summer.
And there's there's parts of Berlin that the state considers easier, and that's probably a five year. Time frame and parts of Berlin that are considered more difficult, and that's probably five to ten years.
It's true.
Which is more uncontent.
We have these. Flashing lights which flash incessantly. I don't know what good they are. What they they just tell you there's a brush walk better. They don't tell you something is about the brush. So since they flash all the time, you stop looking and see.
I was gonna say the same exact topic came up in the January meeting that people just, they don't even see them anymore.
Well, we usually buy the fourth car or something. They'll stop.
It's okay. It's it's a. Yeah, it's a hell. It's a part of the conversation. Depends on. The feedback is important regardless of what it is. Any final thoughts?
So we do have. We do have a letter from someone who lives. On Central Street. Please make me read it. Hello, planning board. Thank you for all the work you've done. Let's start developing plans for the Berlin Village Center. I have planned on attending a meeting Thursday evening, but COVID had other plans for me. So I've included some of my concerns, but I hope could be addressed during the meeting. Please let me know if you receive this email. I'm both a business owner and event planner that uses the eighteen seventy town hall. Our annual craft fair is going on fourteen years now and wholly support. The plans to attract more visitors to Berlin Center. I would like to suggest. That improving and expanding parking along Woodward Woodward Ave and Carter Streets should take precedence over any bicycle lanes. Though parking is currently woefully insufficient based on zoning by law for off-street parking requirements. For even one event at eighteen seventy town hall, let alone for my concurrent events that at more than. Than one venture venue in the center of town. At both my business and the annual fair, my customer base arrives a hundred percent by car or motorcycle. As such, in my opinion. It is my opinion that bicyclists do not support the town's businesses or economy. I'm also concerned that the faster speed and increased volume of the traffic along sixty Route sixty two. I'm in favor of having route designated, the route designated as scenic byway and implementing any and all traffic slowing measures. I routinely routinely witness narrowly avoided accidents at the intersection of Brewer Road and Central Street. And our property has been damaged no less than four times in the past few years by hit and run drivers. Another indicator of the excessive speed on Route sixty two is the daily use of engine braking by tractor trailers. Tractor trailers traveling within. Or almost within the speed limit do not cause excessive braking noise. The frequency of the disturbances appears to suggest that speeding is a major issue. Any widening of the road to accommodate bicyclists would only encourage speeding. At worst, the wider shoulder would increase the likelihood of accidents as traffic tries to squeeze by a left-hand turning vehicle. Flaring horns as cars turn onto our property are commonplace as our high-speed U-turns. I routinely have people tell me they are scared to pull in or out of our property. I hope there are plans to curtail speeding and aggressiveness of the traffic along Route sixty two. Thank you for taking the time to read my concerns. I know you're doing your best to hear everyone's input. Suzanne Roberts, Holiday Farm.
I was just gonna ask where she lives, but I know where that is. I saw I heard the central in that. I heard her about an intersection, but I wasn't sure what. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that we could touch on.
I'm always eager to hear what people think about um any modification to what might be allowed. Or or not allowed for the center village.
What about um?
Particularly if if there was a change in ownership at National Lumber.
Yeah, that's true.
It's commercial village. And so. Retail enterprises, but um certain types of mixed use, you know, if you wanted to do. Um, commercial on the first floor and. Parking on the second floor, stuff like that. It'd be tricky to try to pull that off with the zoning.
Commercial village means what what's a village?
And then click on twelve West Street.
So in the commercial village zone, um under commercial uses. You can have retail stores, service establishments, business or professional offices, banks, restaurants. Um, and that's similar to what can transpire in the commercial zone as well. And you can have municipal uses, religious uses, public and private nonprofit educational institutions. And residential care facilities in either either one. In the commercial zone, you can have gasoline service stations, garages and automobile. Automotive repair shops. And adult use establishments if they meet the requirements. Um, which doesn't mean you could have one in the center of town, don't lose sleep, but. Cause we've defined that zone pretty tightly. So. And then uh. Building mounted telecommunications facilities, telecommunications towers, which can be allowed in commercials on, but not the commercial building zone. So it's it's mainly this gasoline garage, automobile dealership, that's. That's that's the only difference right now, but. You don't have. If if you thought you wanted to encourage. Some type of mixed use. We could either do it through the creation of an oval aid um zone that then you could apply on to. Of that parcel. And other parcels in town that the town meeting voted it. Uh, or you could modify the commercial village zone and say. The mixed uses where there was. Apartment and commercial activity allowed in the same structure, you know, upstairs, downstairs, that sort of thing. If that was the direction you got, it would make sense. You know, whatever we can here. What would it mean for the center? Well, I mean, let's say that you ended up with uh. I mean, sometimes in these cultural corridor, you can see artisans that begin to set up jobs and and they they live on the second floor, but they. I think East Hampton has a cultural corridor where there's there's that type of activity. And it it just means that you end up with this live work opportunity where someone can. Sell their wares, live upstairs, have a small shop. And so the question is, you know, do you envision? That type of. Change in in use if. National, I mean, and that's the big question, I think, in the planning board's mind. If if that. At some point. They decide they don't want to be there in law. Um, what's the likelihood that some other lumberyard would come in and pick up where they are? And it seems like that's less probable now than it used to be. And so what what would happen? It's own commercial village. It's a lot of space. And I would, I mean, I think it's, you know, you suggested that you could, you wouldn't have to have all those spaces continue to exist.